Yeah, we'll start the meeting in about 15 minutes. Here. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, she's using the wrong one. Go back. Okay. Move on to, no one signed up today, correct, Vicki? Okay. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. The meeting held April 6, 2022. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. On to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Just so I'm doing this, but Nan's trying to zoom in. Okay. I'm trying here, trying that here. Yeah. This is being televised, correct? So she can watch it from there and maybe just call in and listen? Is that okay? Yeah. Okay.
Hey, I'm just gonna put my phone.
Thank you. Okay, now we have all board members here. Nan will be participating via the phone. And so we'll do, we'll just do a voice vote unless there is any maze, then we'll do a roll call on that. So we've done the agenda. We'll move on to conflicts of interest. There are no new ones presented. We'll move on to approval of consent agenda. Items 7A through D. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Awesome, that is approved. Onto the reports of the President. We'll move first to 8A, the Financial Aid Update.
President Mickelson and members of the Board. My name is Micah Hanson. I'm the Director of Financial Aid at Southeast Tech. Appreciate a few moments to talk to you about what it is that our department does and give you some numbers of what we're working on currently. Just a quick background, I'm a graduate of South Dakota State University in interdisciplinary sciences. I've been working in the financial aid field for 13 years. My office consists of myself, the Director, I have a compliance manager, and two financial aid coordinators. Together, we have amassed 65 years' worth of experience between the four of us. So a great group to work with, a very strong office that we all support each other very well. Outside of our office, I like to encourage participation in our state, regional, and national associations. The reason that I really like to work on this and encourage this is because it helps us professionally to help learn what those changes that are coming through. Also helps with that networking so that we have someone to reach out to as new things come up. You can see through our South Dakota Association, I've held multiple chairs there, positions with them, worked on multiple committees. And listed in the fall and spring trainings, the presentations that we received there from the U.S. Department of Education, the Office of the Inspector General, Board of Regents. We also received updates from our National Association on what's going on out in DC at Capitol Hill. So there's really a lot of value in the trainings that are provided by not only our state association, but our regional and national associations, as well as the federal student aid that provide an annual training. So we appreciate the continued support of our participation in these associations and in these training events. Some of the additional services that our office does outside of just the standard financial aid day-to-day. We help present to students and families for campus visit days, for the academic advising and registration days. I go out to the Avera Academy and classrooms to careers and talk to those students about financial aid and scholarships and what it looks like when you're deciding on a school. We prevent, present for scholarship application workshops, do presentations for staff and faculty at trainings as needed when we make changes. We do the high school counselor's annual fall meeting we present at that. We prepare numerous reports for federal, state, and local that are asked of us. We also assist with financial aid for Stanford and Avera's Rad Tech programs so that they may receive Title IV aid for the students that need it if their participation. And then we also help process those scholarships from the Southeast Tech Foundation and any third-party scholarships. A couple of the slides that we do during these presentations that I want to hit on that we really focus on trying to help students and parents understand. This is one, a smart investment is one that I really can speak to. I've worked at four different institutions, so every type of institution we have in the state. And talking about, the question we always get from parents, we tell them is, what is this going to cost me? What I like to focus on is return on investment. So we bring up this slide and we talk about in two years, our two-year degrees run under $18,000. And in two years, you're going to be in, out, and probably have a job before you graduate. When we go and look at our friends who choose that four-year institution, right now, that's running about $73,000 for that four-year education. So for a lot less time, a lot less money, you can be in, out, and in a career that's making just as much, sometimes more than what your friends who chose a four-year institution are. So we really try to stress that to parents and students at those visit days when they're trying to make that decision, and then also reinforcing that they've made that smart choice when they're there for that academic advising and registration. Another slide we like to go through with them, and this worksheet this my semester cost is included with every packet they receive when they come in for admissions. So this student can break down based on their program, what they think that cost is going to look like. Then we also go through this at Academic Advising Registration Day. So when they get that worksheet, we can tell them, we can do this math with you. You can see on the slide, we've taken a student that has a schedule. We've broken down that schedule by their tuition, by their fees. We can show them what their financial aid is going to look like so they know, am I going to owe a balance when I leave here today, when I come for the fall? Or am I going to have additional funds? And what questions might I have for financial aid staff that are here today? And then my entire staff is at that event so that if students have questions on that number or how to get that number, we can answer those questions that day for them so they go home knowing what their plan is. Another checklist that we run through them during the presentations is just the, hey, if you're here today and you're not sure what you need to have done, this is a checklist of what your steps are. Maybe you've done one, two, or three of these. Let's walk through how this process runs. So that if a student is coming in, maybe they've done that visit day, they haven't filled out the FAFSA yet, or they have, and they are wondering what comes next, we can give them a breakdown so that they know what those things look like as they go through the process so we don't have students questioning where they're at. Now getting into some numbers that we have for our office. When we look at student numbers, we'll look at 2021, 22 numbers, we'll compare some 22, 23. As far as ICERS, so the ICER is what we use as the word for the FAFSA when it comes in. If a student fills out the FAFSA, it comes into our office, it's renamed. We love acronyms, right? So 2021, 22, we received 5,207 individual files. So out of those 5,207 files, those were tied to 3,282 applicants. So that means, let's say, Rich decided to fill out the FAFSA, and then he wanted to change his address on it, so he changed his address. Well, now we have two for Rich. And then he decided to go in and change maybe what he had in cash, check-ins, or savings. So now we have three. So that 5,207, there are multiples for those students, that's why it boils down to that 3,282. When it comes down to the actual notifications, award notifications we sent for enrolled students, that was 1,799 that were just federal aid, and then 1,892 that are in our system when we started pulling in scholarships. I say we always use caution in looking at these as far as enrollment-wise because there are some students that fill out that FAFSA. We know that we have free college application days. We know that there's a FAFSA completion project that schools are piloting right now. We also know that you can put up to 10 schools at a time on the FAFSA. So there may be a student out there that's just saying, I have no idea where I want to go. I'm going to list the first 10 schools that I can find a code to put on there. So we do know that there are a number of those that we may never see that student even approach us from an admission standpoint that we get those files on. When we go down and we look at 2022, 23, this is numbers as of April 1. Currently have 2,319 files. Those are tied to 1,613 applicants. So far, we've sent out 729 eligibility notifications. So those are students that we have sent what we would normally call an award letter, but the feds are saying they don't want us to use the words "award letter" anymore. So eligibility notifications is what we call those now. So there's 729 students now that have that award letter that are going to know, this is what I'm eligible for for the upcoming year. When we break it down and look at what happens in our office as far as face-to-face, so in our walk-in traffic, we have a system so that we can record every student that comes in. 2020, 21, I went back to 2021 and did from August 1st through April 28th of that academic year. We had 1,473 individual students walk in to see us. 334 students just in the first two weeks of school. So that's the time of the year when we are extremely busy, but to be able to get through 334 students during that time, our staff has done a great job of being able to keep up with that. This current year, so start of the 2021, August 21 to April 28, 1,358 individual walk-in students. 266 of those in the first two weeks of the fall. Really, when I look at that change in numbers, I think in the last few years, over everything that's happened, and we've switched a lot of things to virtual, a lot more things to phone calls and emails. We have a new wave of students coming in that know that those resources are called there on the web or out there via email that they can contact us. So we're seeing a lot more students that are, that are working through those methods. Distance-based, we have assisted families and schools via Zoom or Teams, telephone and email. Just an example, one out of the, so we have our general email inbox that's just one out of the five emails we have. Since January 1st, 1,042 initial emails. That doesn't include any responses that have come back after we've responded to those emails. So we're seeing a large number of those come in, but again, great staff that has helped us manage those. 2021, 22, federal aid. We had 817 individual Pell Grant recipients, 184 that received the SEOG or Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant, 1,323 direct loan borrowers, and we had nine work-study participants for the year. Coming into 22, 23, so far, we have sent out notifications to 726 Pell Grant eligible students, 150 in SEOG, 854 in direct loans, and we currently have eight open work-study positions listed for next academic year. Just a quick rundown of some of the fund aid issues we have and getting students from that. They've submitted something to being complete and ready to go. Getting that additional paperwork in, we always like to remind students, we aren't asking for that because we just love collecting paperwork. It's requirements from the Department of Education. So getting those in, the inability to locate accurate tax information with the IRS being shut down for the last couple of years, it's been incredibly difficult. They shut off their fax line, so we could no longer tell students, here's a simple form that you can fax in and they can mail. So they either had to call and get ahold of somebody, had to try to make an appointment at a local office, which was nearly impossible for a while, or they had to try to create an online account, which for a lot of our traditional students, they couldn't do because they had to have something tied to a credit history record that could be cross-referenced, and a lot of our traditional age students don't have that. Incorrect tax filing statuses, if we see those, we're required to tell that individual that they have to correct that issue or provide us with information from a tax professional stating that it is correct. So while we're not required to be tax professionals, we're required to know everything we can about taxes to make sure that they are accurate. Student-parent ID issues. They have created the FSA ID, which is username and password to log into the FAFSA. Common issues we see with that is students creating it with a K-12 email address that after they graduate is deleted, they can no longer get back in through that way. Or we have sometimes a student or parent that will create it for the other one, and then when they come into our office to try to use it, we don't have the actual contact information we need. We are running into issues with some citizenship statuses with students being eligible, and then aid limits. We have students that are returning from a second degree, or maybe they've transferred out of another area. Both the fund amount for their total or just the amount that they may have used if they come to us in the spring, for example, and used part of it in the fall. And an idea of our typical federal processing, the joys of working with the Department of Education, sometimes October 1st, the new FAFSA is available every year. So they encourage everybody to get out as soon as they can and start filling those out. When they started doing that, they have issues sometimes with their algorithms in selecting students for verification. This year, we saw a significant increase in some types of verification that made no sense. Verification of high school completion status and identity for a lot of our students that were traditional students, even coming out of our own district. So as that came more apparent throughout the nation, the feds finally identified that, agreed that it was an issue, and they resolved that, but not until we had had several months of those issues coming in. They did rescind the directions, so where selective service and drug conviction questions were on the FAFSA and could affect a student's eligibility, they took those requirements away. We're no longer required to verify those items, but they didn't do it in time to get those questions removed from the FAFSA. So on the FAFSA, those questions are still asked. We still get the flags in our system that we then have to go out and manually override and say, we don't need to do this now. Pell Grant dispersment tables, so October 1st, the FAFSA comes out. They want us to start sending information right away, but they don't give us the Pell Grant charts and payment schedules until February 1st. And that is just the schedule because the actual dollar amount wasn't finalized until March 22nd and published on March 24th. So that means that any student that had a Pell Grant that was awarded prior to March 24th has to be re-awarded so that we can get the new correct information updated for that student. So that can create a significant amount. And just some of the regulatory relief updates, they are provided periodically, but sometimes it's not until after we've started a fall semester. So if we have that student that's having one of those issues and can't get things set before the start of the semester, sometimes those relief items don't come through until afterwards. And then, of course, we're still waiting on the Higher Education Act to be rewritten. It's supposed to be rewritten every five years. The last time it was done was in 2008. So we're hoping in our profession that we see something coming on the horizon at some point. So with that, I am happy to again say thank you for the time and answer any questions that you may have.
First of all, thank you. You guys handle a lot, and it's such an important, you know, as we hear about student debt and what students go through to get higher education, you're right there alongside them, educating them and making sure they can go through this. So really appreciate all the work you guys are doing and adaptability to changes, and that Pell thing sounded like a nightmare.
It's entertaining. Thank you.
Having recently completed the FAFSA, I have a little PTSD, some of the words you were using. I think I experienced most of those challenges. So however you can help parents and students is amazing because it's really like at our house, it was the blind leading the blind. And it was like, okay, I just created a username. Oh, shoot, that was mine, not yours. You know, it was just a lot of confusion, and it seems like it's maybe not just for the users, but it's also for the people who are trying to work with it, so.
Share the joy and both.
Yeah. So I think the experience of your office is definitely very beneficial in trying to not just do the work, but also educate the people who you are waiting for to receive the information. So as a parent, I appreciate your team a lot.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the Financial Aid Update?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Onto the new academic report, Diploma in Risk and Investment Management.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, members of the Board. I'm Benjamin Valdez, Vice President of Academic Affairs at Southeast Tech. We are bringing forth for your review and approval, a new diploma titled Risk and Investment Management. The Risk and Investment Management Diploma has been a team effort between Southeast Tech and industry. We have been working with the South Dakota Insurance Association, and Marsh McLennan has been leading the effort for a lot of the insurance agencies throughout South Dakota here in Sioux Falls. They've asked us to reevaluate our current existing programs, which we have taught out. We had two previous associate flight science degrees, and they just did not have a lot of traction, a lot of enrollment within those programs, and we have since ended those programs. But we want to make sure that we are responsive and that we are meeting the needs of industry. The industry, speaking with industry profession, we have decided to do it as a diploma that is then embedded within an associate's degree. So that would allow a student to complete the courses at the diploma level. All those courses are then laddered into the Business Administration degree at Southeast Tech, and then it can also then ladder in with our articulations with the Board of Regents schools as well. We are asking for your approval to have, to start offering this as a new degree this fall. I send open for questions.
Any questions? I think it's a great idea, so thanks for pursuing it. Seeing no questions, do I have, do I need an acknowledgement or?
Acknowledged.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have an acknowledgement on the report on the Diploma in Risk and Investment Management? Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Onto the public hearing on FY '23 Budget and Tenancy of Adoption.
President Mickelson, members of the Board, Rich Clune, Vice President of Finance and Operations. Just one brief comment, member writer, I'm still not sure that I didn't apply for a FAFSA along the way, and financial aid used to be under me, so you are in good shape. Guarantee it. Just a couple things, this is always my favorite time of the year. I don't know if it's because budget is in the sunset or the fact that your end and audits are right around the corner, but either way, it's a win-win. Just a few things to talk about, this is the public hearing related to our FY '23 budget proposal for the post-secondary funds. Just a few things to talk about this is the public hearing related to our FY23 budget proposal for the post-secondary funds. Includes our main collegiate fund, obviously, and then the food service, childcare bookstore fund. This is probably one of the easiest ones to present, so I can actually make this very brief, but we can drill down into some of the other details on it. But the presentation is laid out in such a way that it mirrors the public notification that is put out in August's leader. But when you look at it generally overall, there's kind of three or four main elements to this particular budget. Now, you see overall, we're up $10 million in both revenues and expenditures over the prior year, but very much tied to specific events and projects. Obviously, the biggest piece of it is related to the simulation center that we've been discussing at several different opportunities. So the budget reflects that. You see the increased cost in instruction, $5 million over the prior year. A lot of that's related to the capital, equipment, investment, funding is provided for that. You see that down below in the revenue sources and state sources, an increase there. So 4.5 million is being provided as a special appropriation to purchase the equipment associated with that build-out of the simulation center. Under the supporting activities, under that reference with the two next to the business, for whatever reason, investment in property and plant falls under business, under those major categories. So the big increase there is actually related to the cost of renovating the ZIL facility. And that money is coming through generous gifts. That's why you see the increase in local sources through our two healthcare systems, Avera and Sanford, all providing funds for that. Some of the other money that's coming in that was additional this year, coming out of the state, was a last-minute change to the appropriation bill that provided a 6% salary enhancement for employees of the four technical colleges. So there's additional money coming from the state in that appropriation. That'll be ongoing funding. It's not one-time funds. In exchange for that, when we get to the last slide in this presentation, my favorite slide in this particular one. But in exchange for that additional appropriation, that additional funding, the State Board of Technical Education agreed not to increase the tuition, which they have the authority established. So no increase in the tuition, the state facility fees, and the maintenance repair fees. We also had to agree on a local level not to increase the fees that you all have. So this budget is representative of that. So there is no fee increases to our students. So that's a positive on the student's side of it. The other thing related to the salary enhancement money, when you look at that allocation, it was an appropriation for roughly 2.7 million. Our share is $830,000 of that, 100% dedicated to salaries and related benefit costs. Everybody will be 6% higher, and we are taking it a step further into our part-time employees and our adjuncts, making it very clear for everybody to understand if you were making $1 on June 30th, on July 1st, your new rate's $1.6. Other point of state money that came into there, there was a recalculation of the salary enhancement that was under the HB 1182 billing. We had always been a little outside of that because of our existing salary schedules. So we were only receiving a very small portion of those funds. That distribution formula has changed, and it is flowing through our general appropriations allocation. So we're seeing an increase in the funds that we are going to receive, which has actually helped in this budget cycle as well. It's helped us keep the fees where they're at as part of that exchange. So it was a perfect storm coming into that from a revenue perspective. If we'd had to try to do a 6% salary package and pass that on to the students, we would have been in a requested fee increase that probably would have been viable, would have been in that $15, $16 range. So the additional state funds that came specifically for salary enhancement, the different methodology as it relates to the HB 1182 funds, has provided the resource sources for us to bring this budget forward in a balanced position. Now, you will see down in the red on the existing cash balance, there's a $680,000 use of existing cash. That's a carryover of capital improvement projects that we didn't undertake in FY22. There's still projects we want to commit to. When I do the year-end report in August, you should see a favorable variance of that, same $680,000 or potentially more. So we're just going to carry that over in the way when we do the tentative adoption program. That is an existing use of cash to fund that, what it is. One-time projects that were planned for FY22 just carried over. Each subsequent slide, as we go through this, just breaks it down and drills down into a little bit deeper summary of what's on the first slide. So when you look at the post-secondary programs, the majority of these are actual instructional programs that are out there. So when you see agricultural, food, natural resources, what we're talking about there is our HOAR, our turf management, and BACTAC. That's the way it groups them by those clusters. So again, you're going to see the largest increases when you look at the health science and in the program prep, which includes our Health Core, which has an element of that equipment related to that simulation center. So that's where you're seeing those two big upticks of 3.8 million and 800,000. The architect and construction one that I referenced there as well is related to some equipment purchases that are coming forward in next year's budget. So again, you're going to, there's going to be a pattern developing here as we go through a lot of these increases. As we drill deeper, all related to the simulation center build-out. This is another look at it, breaking it out across the various major categories that we have. So when you look at wages, benefits, purchase service, supplies and materials, capital, dues and fees, again, you see some pretty big numbers down that capital column. Again, related to the simulation center build-out, both in terms of equipment and infrastructure. The remaining equipment that's funded in there, there's a little bit that Eric and I have from an operational standpoint. The remaining academic programs on equipment is being funded by a federal grant. So the only non-federal or non-state supported money for equipment purchases is some of the IT things. And I got just a little bit of equipment from my groundspeople. Not a lot, there's about 100,000 for that, but all the rest of it is tied to academic programming. When you get down on the bottom, you look at this bottom row where the reference total is comparable to last year. Again, you see the increase in the salaries and in the benefits that are related to that. And again, these are all the instructional programs. And again, you see the big uptick in the capital side of it. The decreases in purchase services. Part of that is related to, we were outsourcing our courses, and I won't say which ones, microbiology and, I don't know, physiology, I think was the other one, through USD, went out taking that on in-house. So we don't have that consulting fee anymore. So that's why you see that drop in there. Supplies and material, we did scale back the non-capital. That's those items that are under $5,000. We did scale that back a little bit. And so that's the differential that's happening in that particular category. When you look on the supporting side of it, again, you see that 5.1 million, again, related to the facilities acquisition, construction build-out. It's also the existing projects that would include those carryover amounts and then some other things that we are, kind of minor things. You always leave a little bit for those unforeseen construction projects. Something comes up, we leave a few dollars on the table for that. The decline in the operations and maintenance is related to some of the HERF fund. And I think it just had to do with the way it was classified in the prior budget. Probably should have not been in that category, so that's part of some of the decline. On the data processing side of that, you're seeing some increase related to software maintenance and some staff that are coming into play with instructional technologists. Then again, it's related to that HERF funding that we're going to continue to be able to use some dollars for. These are just some of the smaller lines, just because I couldn't fit them all on one page. Nothing major in these changes. The community service, that's our outreach that Marcel is doing. Early retirement, we no longer have. We finally walked out of that five-year payout of that. The co-curricular were just those intermarial supporting activities. I did reduce the transfer to the couple of the enterprise funds, the food service and childcare fund. As part of the audit this year, the auditors were concerned about the cash balance in the childcare fund being negative. So I'd actually, I got an entry proposed, and you actually acted on that transfer of funds, I think in a meeting in either January or February. Well, right after I pulled those funds up for 150 or 200, whatever it was, to pull it across, we received some additional state funding that came through. So the childcare is entering the year in a much better cash position than they otherwise would have. So we were able to drop that back just a little bit. And so you will see that use of cash, and I think you saw it on that public hearing notice. There's a use of cash in the childcare fund, which is unusual, given the probably five years that beat the drum about how we have to keep giving them money. But because of the state support and the transfer we've already made, we're in a little better position to not have to provide quite as much. This is the same page when you look across, rather than the academics, these are all the supporting sides. So this is, most of the people that are sitting in this room fit into this particular category. And again, the same type of breakout. You see the increase in the salary, 7.5. Reason the benefits doesn't quite move the same way as it did on the instructional. Little more turnover on the instructional side. So whenever somebody leaves, I always put them in it, but raised exposure on the benefit enrollment. Also, I'll jump ahead a little bit. There are an additional five FTE that are being added in this cycle. Couple of them are going to be funded, one with the HERF, the instructional technologist. That's still HERF-eligible for the investment that we've made in that high flex delivery. We can utilize those funds. There's also another instructional position in there that's going to be funded by a grant through the Department of Health. So that position is funded as well. We added a gen ed instructor in the math program, or gen ed for math. And that was really in response to dual credit. And there was a clinical supervision position added in the LPN. And I'm not going to remember the fifth one, but there was, the positions were being added primarily other than that instructional technologists. They're all on the academic side of it and delivery programs. The increase in the purchase services that you see there, again, tied to the construction projects. Architect fees fall under that category. Capitalize them at the end, but in terms of how we budget for them, they're a purchase service. So the majority of that is related to that. Obviously, I think anybody that's looked at their personal utility bill knows why that's where some of it's coming in too. So we bumped up our natural gas and our utility costs in aggregate about $150,000 or roughly 28%. So hopefully, we're estimating and projecting correctly on that as we go into this next year. Again, another different kind of look. It's really the vertical representation of the horizontal page that you just saw. Breaks out the differentials between year-to-year in a little more detail. When you look at wages for instruction, wages for the supporting activities. Again, you see the capital investments going up in the instruction side, capital on the supporting activities just because of where it falls in the budget. So that's the, again, primary repeat of why the adjustments are coming through. This is all that staffing stuff. I think the executive summary kind of laid out a little bit better. And if all the time I spent on budget, I'd spend more time trying to track this. And I think the way I described it to President Griggs, it's like draft day. And we're in the room, and everybody's moving, and we're making adjustments to align with what we're trying to deliver in this future budget cycle. So moving people around, getting them into the right positions where they can best serve the institute. Again, overall, it's a five FTE increase that you are seeing. First page, the previous page was all related to the instructional side of it. This is the support side of it. Again, not major changes on this side, really not major changes overall. Talked a little bit about the means of finance or the revenue sources. Again, we're seeing good support from our donors as it relates to Avera and Sanford and that build-out. Very generous support as it relates to that. And then again, a good legislative session for us. And I know I said this last year, it was probably the best legislative one we have this year was that, in terms of support coming down from the state, which really was well-timed and well-enceded. As stated, this is my favorite slide. This is maybe for dramatic effect, but no changes in the fee structure at all. And again, that was part of the agreement to receive those additional fundings, which all four technical colleges agreed to collectively to do that and get that support. And which again, will be ongoing money, not one-time funds for us. The not much change in the enterprise funds. Again, continuing to provide some support on the transfers in the food service fund, trying to keep costs down, recognizing our students in what, maintaining affordability. So that does need some subsidies, subsidies to keep going. And again, on the childcare, but a little bit less this year as we move forward. Bookstore, we are asking for an additional FTE to help some of its, some additional work as we're starting to do, kind of have a front store and a back of the store with online delivery. So we're adding this additional position to do it, but it will cut down on our part-time costs. Not a huge difference, not a cost we should have to pass on to anybody. So that in a nutshell is the summary of the 50-page document that I submitted. And certainly stand by for any specific questions related to what was presented. As we come into the final adoption in July, anticipate a few changes, nothing like what we experienced last year. We were quite a bit different at this point in time. We're in line with where we need to be. That related to Mike is we'll get updated on what our actual work-study allocation is. There'll be a little bit of a change related to that. Jeff Preger and I are still working through some projects that we'll take a look at and fine-tune some of those prices. You know, as we add additional staff or if somebody leaves, might be some line of things in there. But overall, the final adoption in July is going to look very, very similar, very similar dollars and very similar concepts as we go forward with it.
Okay, I'll finish up for the public hearing. Have to make the motion.
Nice to get good news.
Exactly. No one for the public hearing for the record? Any questions, comments for Rich? No, that is good news. And I'm happy that we're not having to raise our tuition. That's always a good news.
That to do what we can do on the staff side of it, which we have struggled in the past few years to, and I would, in some would argue, we've probably fallen a little bit behind some inflationary measures. This was a great opportunity for us. I think when we got asked the question, we want to do this, I think it took about a millisecond for me to say, oh yeah, we want to do that in getting that support. So that was a great, great event. It was great for our students, and I think it's really great for our employees too. That's going to really have a positive impact on us.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the tentative budget adoption for FY23?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve same sign. That is tentatively adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the FY23 Southeast Tech salary schedules.
The salary schedules are reflective of that 6%. You know, just an oral presentation, but they're there. And again, it's funded by the state. And what we did is just took the 2022 matrix of all the different schedules that we have, and every cell in there was increased by 6%. 6%, rounded up to the nearest whole dollar or whole penny for some of those hourly rates. This is reflected in the tentative budget that you just approved. Revenues are there to support that, and we will request approval of those schedules as we move forward and make offers and do those things.
So every position in your system got to 6%.
Right. And we take it back to, I listened to the appropriations hearing and took to heart the one legislator that said, I do not want to get a telephone call from anybody that says I did not get a 6%. As short as I will ever make a guarantee on anything, I can say everybody's getting 6%.
Good.
So, or more. Some are getting more.
Any other questions or comments? Approve the salary schedule. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '23 Southeast Tech salary schedules?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are approved.
Well, I know one of the good things to mention is graduation on Friday, 5:00 PM at the arena, and so that's always great news, so coming up on the last days. Anything else for the good of the other Dr. Griggs room? Sing none. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yep.